Yes. The original one?
Ultimately.
Joel, Joe, your packet is all of the additions and the agenda. Joel just gave me 7A prior to the meeting start. Yeah. Yep. And it's in a separate.
Let's call the council meetings to order. Roll call please. Lassie.
Here.
White.
There.
Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Lassie.
Here.
DePonce. Here. That's right, for the pledge.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public input, do we have anyone here for public input?
Yes.
I guess, you know, the thing on the amendment for the chicken organs and stuff like that. And I have some issues with it. One, going through this thing, how many permits are going to be given out? There is nothing in here that says how many the city's going to give out. We can wind up with three, four, if people ask you for permits for chickens, that's going to be a bunch. The other one, it says in there for square footage for the chickens, and calls for three square feet. And if you look at human society, they recommend that it should be four feet, four square feet. Then the distance from the properties, if you own a house on one of the inside circles here at Calhoun, you could line up with the neighbor on your right with a chicken coop, neighbor on the left with a chicken coop, and neighbor line you with chickens. All within 10 feet of your property line in your backyard. You could walk out and barbecue in the summertime no matter which way the wind blows. The other one that has here is, there's nothing in here whatsoever about disease. Basically, the reason people want chickens in their backyard is because of egg prices. They went up because of bird food. Now, if you look online and stuff, ever since they started tracking it, backyard chicken coops, or chicken in backyards in Minnesota have been documented that every year they found birds with disease in their chickens. There's nothing in here that says if your neighbor all of a sudden has chickens and all of a sudden he starts getting, goes out and he's got chickens that are starting to die. What does he do with it? Nothing is said. He just puts it in the garbage can line with the chicken coop and nothing goes on. You've got a kid next door that all of a sudden starts getting sick and it brought to hospital and they wind up in ICU or wherever and the doctor says, well, this kid's got chicken flu. Where'd it come from? Who's going to be liable for it? There's nothing in here that the city's going to be, because there's nothing in here about the, oh, it, what there should be, I think, is if you have chickens and you're starting to find some of your chickens that are dead, they have to be brought to a veterinarian to find out why they died. And then notify the rest of their people because bird flu can be transmitted by airborne. It doesn't have to be direct dog-dogbird birds. So, there's a lot of stuff in here that's good. There's a lot of stuff in here that needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else here for public input? Okay, on to additions or additions. We have A, hire Ally Pegel as the teen center attendant, campground committee, merchandise sold at the store seasonal, pork procedures, and C, street department garage door. Do we have any other additions or additions?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to add a fellow vacancy in the planning commission. Lost a member. So, I would like that on the agenda to advertise for addition.
Okay. People who are interested. We'll put the planning department under 9D for pretty under 20 reports. We can see the teen center attendant. We'll put that under 9B1, or I, whatever, in that case, at least under rec. And then campground, we can put under... We can put that under E, under 20 reports, because there's a campground three, right? Yeah, we'll put that under there. Okay, and then street department garage door. We can put that under new business, under J. Any other new business or additions or additions? Do we have a motion to accept the additions?
I'll make a motion to accept the additions.
Motion. Motion by White, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Fitzpatrick, any discussion? Roll call, or I'm sorry, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, approve the minutes of the regular meetings made 20th. Approve all bills and payrolls who's audited by the committee with the additions of the Optum, Snowmobile ATV Club, Peterborough Committee, and US Bank under, these are on pages 10 through 14. The overtime report and the correspondence.
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Motion by Lassie, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by White. Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you to everybody that played a role in those two big fires that we had. I see a lot of people got some overtimes from that, which is good, but I appreciate all the dedication, firefighters, ambulance department, and even city officials. And we thought we had a, could have had a really emergency there, evacuation and stuff like that. And I thought everything was handled quite well, and I really appreciate that. So, thank you to everyone that played a role in that.
Anybody else? Roll call please. Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
DePonce.
Yes.
Motion carries. The attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor, you've got a front interview there. A updated lease agreement after review by the attorney for the purchase funding to keep under greenhouse in collaboration with their internship for sustainability. I know just a couple of things, one, we removed the insurance provision from landlord or city's responsibilities. So, we would not be insuring the greenhouse. And then they would be looking at actually getting both parcels, the two owner parcels. And then the lease amount would increase to $600, as proposed in this, to $600 each year. And I don't know how you want to handle that, given that I think there's going to be a public hearing on that. Because we did want to get it in front of you, it's just part of the attorney's report, we're going to take action on it. And then, no update on the, how we assign the lease at this time.
And Joel, so it's $600 for each lot?
Total. So, the lease would be for both lots, and it would be $600 per year. So, over the 20-year lease term, that would be $12,000.
So, Joel, they're going for both of those lots, and we have a public hearing on Thursday. So, we would have to include both of those lots.
Yeah, if you, yes, yeah, that would be my recommendation for consideration. If you want to, if you wanted to accept that, if you wanted to choose one of those to go forward with it. I mean, it's still in, it's in a negotiation phase for them to try to make it work. But if the public doesn't want to go forward with that, then it doesn't matter how many lots there are.
Yeah, well, I would have that for council approval at our next meeting, or disapproval.
Yeah, so you could do it, so you could approve this pending the public hearings or authorize the appropriate signatures in general form. That way you would be late for the next meeting, but however you want to handle that.
It's up to the pleasure of the council.
Thank you, Joel. Does anyone want to take any action on the lease right now? Prove it conditionally.
Well, the rule along home, we approve the lease agreements pending council decision on whether or not to grant a conditional lease agreement.
Okay, motion by Lassie, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Fitzpatrick, any discussion? Roll call please. Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
DePonce.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, we're on the unfinished business, the trial dog park at the outdoor ring. Thank you for the consent agenda.
Justor and the league, it seems like the park would fall under the same laws as any recreational park with minimal liability to the city. Of course, if something were to happen, it would be covered under our current insurance plan. The only risk of a rate increase would be as if claims were filed.
So, is this at the outdoor park, is this the chosen area now, or still up here?
The outdoor ring is the trial.
Oh, true.
For this summer, it's the trial run for the dog park. And then if it goes well, we will look at another location. And then using the fencing for the softball fields.
And this is, sure, come on up, Kathy.
So, we're looking for permission just to use the outdoor ring this summer, just to see how it goes. But we've been doing a little bit of research and driving around and looking at other dog parks. The White Lakes Dog Park is a ball field, basically. And they basically don't have tubage signage, just dog field and not much. And we went and visited the Ely one today. There is a dog field park, I guess, and that's also a ballpark field. And they are looking at making a dog park at that same location. So, those two are fields. I can't remember, you know, the West Babbitt project, that fencing there, was that part of the phase one? Yes.
I brought the picture of the artist rendering, it's sitting over at the table over there. And it does include, so that has to be removed. We have to remove.
Okay.
But that fencing that could be saved or not?
Right, right, I was just wondering. And then also, you know, looking at over by the bike trail there, there's 6.45 acres. But, you know, maybe to the left would be good. And if that was some matters of the AKV, then they'd be happy to help us if we had to do any kind of, you know, stump and tree removal or.
Do you know the White Lakes and the Ely ones, are those non-profit?
The White Lakes one I believe is a city. The Ely one, I don't think is a city. So, I don't know which direction you want to go. Because if we needed to have a 501(c)(3) as the terms of the recreation, that is to utilize for grounds and stuff like that. So, I guess it's up to, you know, what you want to pursue. I guess right now, we want to make sure we can use this, but we want the discussions to continue forward.
More from that location?
Yeah. Yeah.
Kathy, before you go, maybe you want to come to the planning commission meeting on Thursday? We are going to be discussing that. Well, we went on prior point, saying, hey, it will be more than half a year. But anyhow, we will be discussing the 6.45 acres. We have an offer by, and it's on our agenda, so you have a pitch to me about that. I think we should consider it at that time.
What time is your meeting?
Nine o'clock. And you're supposed to say that time is perfect.
That time is not perfect, I'm sorry. I can tell you, can I just relay it to you? You, or like maybe a letter, give two letters, do you?
Yeah, why don't you give me a letter?
Okay.
Bring it tomorrow night.
And then, I mean, if the problem, is proofing that section of land? I'm sure we can find some of them, we'll settle the beat idea or not.
Well, those decisions may not, you do have to consider, so.
Okay.
Did you vote, did you get any proof of that? On the last meeting, did you approve the rec, or was there still information you were gathering before?
What's that?
I'm sorry. Last meeting, did we all approve, give approval for the rec, or were you, were you still going to be one of the relations gathered?
We tabled it simply to find out if the sign would work as a waiver to help us with, if there was any claims. The answer is no, we'd still be responsible for claims. We haven't gotten to the point where we discussed location yet, because the trial run is going to be at the outdoor ring. That doesn't mean that we're not looking towards the future. I would hope you'd include me in conversations about location, because there's plans for other areas too.
I guess my, my question is, are we going to go forward with preliminary use of the rec?
The outdoor ring.
As a temporary?
The outdoor ring.
The outdoor ring, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, that's what you have to go on.
We have not.
Fred, did you want to add anything else?
Me?
No.
No, okay. Great, so then I guess we need to have a motion at the outdoor.
I'm going to motion, let me go ahead and do a trial run with the outdoor ring, have a dog park and see what is.
Motion by White, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Fitzpatrick, any discussion?
So, is this going to fall under the rec department for the first, this first trial run? Who's going to be responsible for?
I think it's.
Those that might not clean up after the dogs and stuff like that.
I think it's, if you don't respect it, then it's not going to work out. I don't, I don't think it's the rec department's responsibility to have to clean up the dog park.
Okay, so who's it going to fall under if it's not?
I would hope that the people would be responsible, and if they're not, I'll give it myself, because it should not fall under them.
Do we still have those, those, like, what do you call them, W, it's a letter? That when, when the dog park, you can see, Bo was here, he had these, like, little bags and a trash bin and everything.
There's some at the campground, I don't think we have any.
The ones at the campground are new, they're not the ones that were there.
I haven't seen any anywhere.
Mm-mm.
Yeah, he had, there's a bunch, but, you know, councilman? When Bo, when Bo was here on council?
No, when Bo was on the council, I was off the council.
Okay, so when Bo was on rec, was rec and council in contact or?
Well, no. He could not do both at once. So, when he became rec director, he resigned from the council.
Okay, and you weren't on council then? I know he, I haven't seen him anywhere.
The insurance adjustor did say that other cities who have dog parks have like a general rules and regulations. If you wanted to adopt something like that, we could put it on the city website just as a, this is information for it, it's open however long, however, these are the rules that you do have to follow.
I have some examples of that, or you can send over to the.
There are, I think there are some in the packet, just from what Joey included with his information that he gave me.
Should there be a sign of point of use, obviously, the public should be assigned some rules on point of use. And then, I don't know, if we put a garbage can up there, or we just expect everybody to take their stuff with them, or whatever, just. I mean, and that gives you guys stuff to do, so I'm asking.
Well, we're going to have stuff to do either way, there's, you know, yeah, so, other than cleaning up the dog food, there are rec, well, it's a recreation activity, so we have to be handling it. We'll, we'll get the amenities they need, a garbage can, we'll figure it out, garbage cans.
Yeah, so garbage, basically a garbage can has a sign before you get going.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
All right, any further discussion? All right, let's do, um, let's do a roll call, please. Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
DePonce.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number 274 regarding regulations for the keeping of chickens within the residential district. So, everyone has, okay, sorry, go ahead, Joe.
I have a question. Can we pass this and then add to it? Or do we have to add to it and send it back to the planning commission?
I think it never, it never went back to the planning commission, I think it's on council level now.
Yes, and we're voting on it.
If you voted on it, could you vote on it with an amendment to the wording?
Yes.
So, we need a motion to pass the ordinance, or adopt, or adopt the ordinance, sorry.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 274.
Okay, motion from Fitzpatrick to adopt ordinance number 274. Wait a second. Wait a second. I'll second it, any discussion?
Well, you know I'm not going to be quiet.
I know. It would, it would expect.
And I'm not going to disappoint you. All right, first, I reviewed the ordinance, and I realized it's going to be passed. And while there are some good things in the ordinance, there are some things that really need to be addressed before you pass it. Here we go. Let's start with the title, do you have your ordinance in front of you? The ordinance really should read, City of Babbitt ordinance 240, and ordinance amending ordinance 137, the zoning ordinance of the City of Babbitt, and then blah, blah, blah. This is how we have always done amendments to the zoning ordinance, rather than referring into just city code. So, I would make that recommendation number one for, for adoption or for your consideration. Secondly, remember, even this thing is a little confusing, you should have capital letters on your subs, on your main sections and your subsections are, should be numbered, and your sub subsections should be small lowercase letters. I think that's just a matter of trying to keep it easy to understand. All right, section one. Six H's are allowed, okay? Did you realize that if you compare the, the. So, only of the rural residential, which is, you know, rural areas to the town, that the rural residential would not be allowed to have any chickens there because of the fact that they need two acres to have any chicken. So, what you're going to do is you're going to allow six chickens on Harson Town, in the town site proper, and no chickens on rural areas where they have two acres of land. And this is from our animal ordinance further in the, in the zoning ordinance. So, probably if you wanted to do that, make it correct, you should probably not just rezone or allow chickens in the R2 district, you might want to keep the chickens in the R1 district so that they are treated equally with the people in town. Because we do want to separate the animal ordinances later on in the, in the zoning ordinance that probably wouldn't amount to we had a public hearing. Section two, section 1C, housing requirement, there's no mention of a maximum size of a coop. Secondly, is the coop considered an accessory structure? Because only one accessory structure is allowed in the town set. Is the coop and run, are they going to be used to compute the maximum size or maximum area that can be occupied by buildings? Because accessory buildings, garages, and houses all figure into how much of your property you can occupy. So, there's no mention of that, so that can be confusing to the zoning officer who wants to issue a permit. And are you requiring a building fee for the coop? Are you requiring a building permit for the coop? It's rather vague there, it doesn't say anything. Next objection, the 10-foot setbacks of property lines is totally inadequate. And I think Dave Sherman addressed that, my fellow planning commission member, that somebody who buys another property could have a chicken coop on all three sides of him within 10 feet of his property. Is that fair? Would you like to have a stinky coop next to you on the Minne Road side? All you can do is smell that stuff. Most lots in town are 68 to 72 p wide, and usually 162 or 180 p. There's no reason why anybody wants to put a chicken coop, could not follow a 25-foot setback from the side lot lines and rear lot lines that would put a spat to have in the middle of their yard for them to enjoy. Section 1D, sanitation and nuisance prevention, rather than staying, weekly cleaning should be strongly recommended. I think you should have, weekly cleaning should be mandatory. Section E, waste management and food storage. And again, I think David addressed this with his concern, that you have a 20-gallon container to store chicken poop. You know how long it would take to fill a 20-gallon container with six chickens? Can you imagine the stink, the odor? I think that should be reduced quite a bit in emptying the room. In section two, it's licensing. Is licensing chickens a stayment of building permit? And Dave brought this up, how many license does the City of Babbitt have in vision? Have you given that any thought? Everybody more biased, did they get one?
To, to add on to that, I did ask if there was going to be a certain number of permits that were allowed for them. And that, I was told that that would be a form of discrimination, that we are not allowed to limit who gets them, just like for dogs or cats.
Yeah, I just brought that up because, you know, what the heck. Item C, proof of completion of chicken care education courses required. Who is going to give a chicken care education course? You're online, so you're going to require everybody who are online to get a chicken care, okay?
When you get a dog license, you need to have your vaccinations covered.
Yeah, dogs are a little bit different from chickens. Dogs are domesticated, chickens aren't. This lady has thoughts, and Dave brought this up, so I'm just going to reiterate that. And he mentioned the disease control such as bird flu. Any dead bird must be brought to the vet, and then we determine if it's bird flu, and you should have language in there, that if it is a bird flu, then the chickens must be destroyed and the whole area is infected. One more thing, we, we have definitions of chickens in our zoning ordinance, and they're classified as farm animals. Now, should they be reclassified as domestic pets, like a dog or a cat? Have you given any thought to that? In zoning ordinance, in permitted accessory uses in the R2 district, we have specific language that says as a, as an accessory use, dogs and cats. The keeping of three or more dogs and three or more cats, should you also include the keeping of more than six chickens in that line? Because it is an accessory use. Finally, you know, we, we went through this, this stuff with the ordinance. And we know that last year, we did a survey. And the survey went in favor of people who are opposed to keeping chickens. And once in a while, we get criticized, or especially the planning commission, for holding meetings at nine o'clock. And I would say that when the goal meeting's at nine o'clock, we do give people the chance to respond either verbally, in person, or in writing to variances. We give people the chance to respond to conditional use permits. We publish it in the paper, they can respond either verbally or written. And the same thing with zoning ordinance. When a petitioner petitions to have amendment to the zoning ordinance, it must go through a public hearing. The difference is if the City of Babbitt, on their own initiative, initiates a change in the zoning ordinance, you do not need to go to a public hearing. As Joel brought out at the last meeting. But there are two paragraphs below that that directly say if a petitioner and if this happened, in this case, the petitioner filled out the zoning form and he came and asked to change the ordinance, this should have gone to a public hearing. And the heck of it is, it didn't go to a public hearing and this is easily one of the most controversial ordinances that the city has faced and yet we denied public input. And then done.
Do I have one question? In regards to sheds in the, in the backyard shed, do you need a permit for that?
You need a permit for every structure.
Or just like a old rakes or whatever?
Yeah, storage sheds, storage sheds, anything, any accessory structure.
With any plastic when you get a... Like, so I'm just asking.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Well, I'm sure there, I'm sure if I were to drag around town and just randomly count how many sheds there are, I'm sure you don't have that many number of permits for them. Dog houses, would that fall under the same?
No, dog houses, gazebo's, things like that are exempt as storage structures. They are exempt. There are certain other things that are exempt and I can't name them all up hand. But I guess for clarity for the zoning officer to issue permits, do you consider this an accessory structure? Or do you exempt it as an accessory structure? Do you exempt it from total lot coverage? Or do you count it for total lot coverage? So... Those are things that need clarity.
Mayor, if I could, one point. I would acknowledge the learning counselor's position regarding the petitioner. My understanding was that this was initiated by the city council and my analysis of the city's ability to amend the public hearing was based on that. And if it was provided as a response to a petition for the city to oppose, I would agree that it should go through a public hearing process. And on that alone, I would recommend that the city send it to the zoning committee to board a public hearing.
Thank you, Joel, I appreciate that. I didn't catch, I wasn't putting it up at the last meeting to recall that it was a petition. Never again, I had to go back and reread the ordinance to make sure I was on solid ground, but thank you for that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well, if we're going to set this as an ordinance back and send it to the planning and zoning, can at this time we make some revisions to this ordinance before we send it? Because I think Dave brought up some good points, Jim brought up some good points. Gives us the opportunity right now to make some changes before it goes in front of the public hearing with some changes. One being, I didn't follow along with the verbiage on how it should be labeled as an ordinance, Jim, I mean...
Well, it's just housekeeping, Dwayne, it's a standard format that goes in the...
That you guys can take care of on your head, right? So I would add that adding the same... So R-one districts fall under the same rules as far as the number of chickens, so they're not... So we don't have a fire strike there. And then also the location. I think if we make it twenty feet, that would make sure the coops were at least forty feet apart. You said twenty-five, that was the middle.
I'm going for a big gusto, but I don't... I want this part away from...
Each other.
Yeah, from property lines, from a buddy neighbor, so as not to interfere with enjoyment, they have their own yard.
So anyway, we come up with a, something that the council can agree on, a number of feet from property lines. And then also the maximum. Nobody's going to want to be trying to wrestle around twenty gallons of chicken shit. That's going to be pretty heavy. Five-gallon pails are pretty easy to handle. They're readily available with lids out and stuff. I think five gallons would be a lot, make a lot more sense as a five-gallon coop. And that still is a lot of chicken. So add that in there. That the options of proof of completion of chicken care that they do have to bring in on online. I imagine they'll get a principal certificate that they can bring in when they register to have chickens. That could be added in there. And then the thing whether the coop should be another structure that's going to take away from their square lot footage ability to add structures. I personally think we should put them under the same things as dog houses.
Exempted.
Exempted.
Yeah, I'm okay with that as long as we clarify.
Yeah, but these are the things that I'm saying that maybe if we take care of this now, by the time it got to you guys, and then also...
Wouldn't have to go back and forth again.
Right, wouldn't have to go back and forth again. There was something about the square footage of the coops, I guess I...
It's supposed to be four feet per chicken by the humane society, so three, so to make your coop size have to be twenty-four cubic feet.
Okay, I think if that's the case...
What do you suggest, they say go four feet?
If that's the standard or something.
Whatever, a square footage.
I just want your input, that's fine, I'm not, you know...
I don't, I don't know. I guess, where did that come from, Dave?
I just went online and looked up the humane society and in there, in one of their paragraphs, it recommends that, they recommend four square feet.
Well, that means in the area where they run their own.
That's, it's in the coop, yes. I didn't look, I didn't look to see what it costs for the outside run for chickens. They also have a certain amount of rule per chicken there also, I didn't look at that. So you're going to have to, when you're talking about this, you're talking about a chicken coop, push it across the water to close the run where the chickens can get out. So they're not running around your yard, period.
I think these are the things we can clean up and present you something.
Till last, I did notice, Dave, should someone start finding some dead chickens for no reason? I guess that would make sense that we would have some sort of...
I don't know if vets do that.
That you can do that?
I don't know if vets do that, veterinary. I was told that they don't do that, I don't know. I, you know...
Well, then that's something. Do you know anything about that, Dave, disease control?
I haven't looked at it, but I mean, you know, commercial operations, they must have vets that, how do they determine that, you know, there's bird flu there? So I, somebody would have to talk to the veterinarian and see if they have any way of tracking this, see if the bird has it, I guess, so...
We can talk about that Thursday at our meeting.
Pardon?
We can talk about it Thursday at our meeting.
So I'll amend my motion to reflect the changes in the ordinance. John, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. Let's do a roll call, please.
Lassie?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Lassie?
So what is the motion again?
To amend the ordinance with what Wayne had just discussed to go back to planning.
I've got a bold no because I'm not in favor of the change of ordinance, but I will amend it for you.
Okay.
And DePontis, yes. Motion carries.
Okay, LCCMR Marina funding update. So we had discussed about shelving the Marina project and Sarah turning the remainder of the LCCMR grant back after some further investigation into that, if it would get hit on the city for not fulfilling a grant that was awarded. Sarah did some more information looking into it, so if you want to...
Yeah, I spoke, I had a meeting with the DNR who distributes the funds for LCCMR. And one of the first questions she asked was why we were going to stop the project and then told me that we do... And I know this because I filled out the report in order to submit for reimbursement, you have to fill out a report and so along the steps, there are reports you fill out. And so she said the final report that you fill out would be considered an unsuccessful grant because we stopped the project. So that would go on permanent record, it would go on published documents and it could affect us getting LCCMR money, which again is not taxpayer funded, this was from the Minnesota State Lottery. So we don't necessarily know where that comes from, it's not taxpayer money. The Marina project that we're talking about to pay for this hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar project is the design. So there's nothing physical going out there at this time at the V H, it's just a design that could be finished, completed, and then archived for the next council or the next twenty years or whatever you want to. But it would, it would cause a hit and I know that Jason from S E H also said that. I know that I've talked to some of our other employees and it's definitely going to go on your record that you had an unsuccessful grant.
And after further thinking about it, we don't want to give back a black eye when we go apply for future grants or other future councils. And now just because we complete this Marina project doesn't mean that we're going to go ahead with the Marina project. But it is there available for other councils if they decide to go that route or who knows how it's going to happen, but it would be there. And instead of losing the opportunity for future grants or being at a disadvantage for getting future grants, we would have the project completed and then even determine what to do with it once it's completed as it was structured to do.
At the top of Marina project, it's a Marina design project, so we would just, we would end up having a design out of it. And we wouldn't have to fill out that report saying that we basically wasted the money that we already were given.
So basically what it's saying is if we don't go ahead, spend the rest of the money for the design, that it could harm our credit rating in the future for us asking for money, which is unfortunate. And I get it, we don't want to risk that because we do have reason to believe that we will have upcoming projects where we will be the DNR. But so our hands are kind of tied on the whole thing. Either we risk, we shut it down completely and then we risk having a poor credit rating with them? Not the answer I wanted to hear at all. Seems like it's still a waste, but that happened because we didn't shut it down when we had the opportunity.
So you applied for it?
Huh?
Yeah, you gave the approval for the apply for.
Yeah, but we had the opportunity to shut it down and we voted accept.
Well, I think at that time, the majority of the council went for the Marina.
Yeah, there was a three vote that day.
So there's... Yeah, no, it was given the go-ahead and I think the wise thing to do is, like I said at the last meeting, continue with the project and keep our credit with the LCCMR because otherwise we'll jeopardize the city council on all future dealings with the LCCMR. We aren't delegating money on them.
So I just want to add to that a little bit more because I know that a lot of people have a lot of strong feelings about that and I, I want them to know that by not targeting our reputation with the grant funding people, that opens us up to being able to get more grants. This grant is not a taxpayer grant, it's lottery money, so we're not using that. But when the tax, when we need money and we can't get it because LCCMR won't give us any more lottery money, then we're going to be looking to the citizens and start raising your taxes and start using your tax money for things that we need because we can't get the funding because we have unsuccessful grant reports.
So in the long run, it's a benefit for the city to go ahead and finish with the design and so therefore I'm going to make the motion that we continue on with the design of the Marina with the LCCMR funding grant that we received.
I'm going to support that.
Okay, motion by DePontis, second by last, any discussion?
Obviously we wouldn't have to do so many of that, but I thought when the council voted on that, it was for the drilling operations, it turned into, you could have I know you talked in this thing when I voted last time, I thought we only approved for drilling to see if we could even have them, we didn't know it that well. I don't recall the council adding all this extra stuff in there on the designing and all this other stuff.
Okay, Joe, the contract for the Marina design project is hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for S E H for a complete design. And so that includes all of the subsurface testing, all of parking lot tests, everything that goes into completing a complete design for a project. So the soil boring, yes, that was part of that hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. But we're only fifty percent complete at this point, there's nothing to show for any of that really, except the soil samples or the subsurface samples. Yeah, the whole project, design project is a hundred and ninety-seven thousand in total, I understand.
Yeah, and we have that, we have a preliminary design, but we need to develop the entire project. How much concrete, where we're going to do this, put that in this parking lot and so on. That's our design break phase, when that's over, you can put that on the shelf, maybe twenty years down the road, ten years down the road, another council might say, let's go for a Marina. We won't be here, so that mark will be done.
So we can see where this is going, I just note that I hope in the future that we take better thought of what our community wants before we get this far into something.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please. Oops, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you need to rescind the motion from two weeks ago, you can't make a motion on top of a motion. You rescind it to stop and send the money back.
We didn't stop it, we halted it until we got more information.
Okay.
No.
You made a motion last week to send it back or two weeks ago.
Yeah.
You did.
Yeah. The initial motion to halt the progress was a couple of meetings before the last one. The last meeting you voted to stop the project and return the money.
All right, thank you for that.
And only the three people that said yes can rescind it. So, I think that's that.
Everyone but Jim.
It was everybody but me, that's it.
Joel's absent.
Yeah, Joel's absent.
All right, who made the motion?
You did. Oh.
I rescind my motion to end the design phase of the Marina project.
I do believe I did second, so I'll rescind my second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Fitzpatrick to rescind his previous motion to stop it, was seconded by Wayne. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Lassie?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Lassie?
Yes.
DePontis?
Yes, motion carries. So now I will go forward with my motion to continue on with the LCCMR funding design.
And I will...
Seconded by the last, Lassie, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Lassie?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Lassie?
Yes.
DePontis?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, on to the planning commission committee reports. Resoning of parcels one oh five dash zero zero eight zero dash zero zero three five zero and dash zero zero four zero zero and green mining company is a green. He heard me.
Which parcels are those?
The ones behind the golf course.
Oh, we have those as parcels? I didn't know. I didn't know that there was any survey done out there yet. I know we designated various on the map, but I didn't know they had parcel designation.
We are not designated parcels by the county.
So, if I can add a little bit to that, I've been talking to the green mining people and I think the council is in tentative agreement with the location of this industrial park. And Joel, on this one, being as how this was initiated by the council, we would not need to go to a public hearing, is that correct?
That would be correct.
So the council then has the option tonight to rezone that area for the green mining company and they want to get bonus as soon as they can.
Okay, so I just looked up those parcels and there are two forty acre sections just south along the road there. So it would be the individual parcels that are surveyed out of that, those two forties.
Okay, and but they're not going to, okay, we can rezone both of those. Okay, and but they're not gonna, okay, we can rezone both of those at this time. Green mining company's not gonna take it all. They're just gonna leave a portion of them. So I'm going to move that we rezone those parcels to industrial district.
Okay, motion by Lassie. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Fitzpatrick. Any discussion?
So are we zoning light industrial and then?
This, this is industrial. Yeah, the reason we're doing an industrial instead of light industrial business is because this type of activity, greenhouse, is a permitted use in an industrial business.
Okay.
So.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
DePontic.
Yes, motion carries.
Good work, guys.
Anything else? That was it, right?
Oh, well, the, um.
Yeah, you're.
Yeah, okay, that's it for that part.
Okay, then we've got a two purpose, purpose, purpose.
Purpose.
Purpose land offer, easement and first right of refusal.
Okay, this, this must refer to the planning commission at the last meeting. However, the planning commission will not meet until Thursday. We have not met since the council meeting. So I prefer to table that and perhaps we can come to the planning commission meeting and the planning commission will discuss this along with other things. And then we will have a recommendation for you at the next meeting.
Okay, assumption. I don't think there's anything else.
Yeah.
Regards to that. Yeah, no, I thought there was something else regards to that, or is all?
Well, they were looking at it as a possible.
Right. Okay, all right. Easement, did purpose have a first right of refusal?
Well, this should be awarded the agreement if we sell it.
Okay, then. Oh, that was first right of refusal.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, on to rec committee. I put that on my CD. But yeah, I just wanted to wire it in there. So, okay, recreation committee, playground equipment additions and repairs, all cars. So we had some leftover funding from the playground funding that we had. These are the last touches to central park, repairs at both the ball field and beach park. And the total is 24,700, no, the total is 25,279. We have 24,748 dollars left in our funding, which puts us over by 530 dollars. We can make that within budget with the sale of the equipment. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the contracts in your package.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the full funding.
Okay, motion by White. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
DePontic.
Yes, motion carries. Caitlin, do you have a little higher?
Yeah, we need somebody for the teen center and we have one applicant.
Okay.
I have an application.
Did you, did you?
I did not include the application.
So the application did not make it in to the package?
I can copy it if you'd like right now.
Go get it.
Show me to go get it.
Give us a summary or something or nothing about the.
She's my niece. I know. Typically we don't put the applications for the summer help in there either, do we?
No.
But typically we just take the recommendations from the department. So if Caitlin's working that, he's that we hire this person.
I think a few meetings back, I actually, was I given discretion to hire a teen center as needed? I think there was that.
You might have been.
Actually.
Because when Logan got promoted, it left a vacancy and then Matt going in as summer help.
All right, so we have a motion based on Caitlin's application.
Oh, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Lassie. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by White. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
DePontic.
Yes, motion carries. Public safety committee. Ambulance department, summer on call and sentence.
Yeah, so I did get a letter into you guys. I apologize, didn't get in there until today. But essentially, after taking a look at our roster, we're gonna be down to approximately five E M Ts slash paramedics. And those are the only people who can be in the back of the ambulance for the duration of an emergency call or a transport. And so that being said, it is a requirement by the state that we have 24/7 coverage, 365. And so for the one position to be filled by an E M T or paramedic equates to about 168 hours a week. For at least the E M T or paramedic position, the other position can be filled by an E M R if they pick up. And so to make it, if we were to make it even across the board, for hours worked, each person would have to work 34 hours on call on top of their full-time jobs, taking care of families, that kind of stuff. And so we, as a department, kinda wanna incentivize our E M Ts and paramedics to step up and take on call this summer and really try to help carry that load and compensate them for having to give up probably holidays, family time, free time, friends, you know, more of a personal life. So we're looking for every 36 hours that they pick up on call a week, just for the E M Ts and paramedics, not the E M Rs, to give them 120 dollars on top of what they're making for their on-call. So if they only work the 36 hours, they make the 120 on top of whatever we're already paying them. If they decided to go gung ho and work the 72, then they'd get the 240 on top of whatever they make. And currently we do have a little bit of excess in our payroll budget to account for this. And as of right now, I'm, just because of the staffing hardships that we are having on the ambulance, I would like to see it throughout the summer and possibly going into the fall depending on how our staffing goes.
Safety committee had a meeting today and all three of us voted to go ahead and present this to the council. We are in favor of that, the budget, Sarah could directly access it, they're on 6,000, so.
That's hard in payroll.
In payroll, so it would not, it would not exceed that even if we kept it all the way through January 1st. It was a recommendation, the safety committee that we implement this and then we look at it at January 1st to incentivize people for it. I think there's only about, what, six people that are right now in the department that can, that are there that can jump in the back?
Yeah, about five or six. We have two that are gonna, are on medical leave or are gonna be on medical leave starting this summer. One taking care of somebody that's on medical leave. And then we have a few that are on leave of absence. So that leaves us to about five or six E M Ts or paramedics pretty much keeping the service alive right now.
If you miraculously were to gain qualified staff, then you'd be able to probably halt this at any point.
I would think so, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Like, I understand that's probably a pretty slim chance that that would happen.
Yeah.
It would be a great thing. So, I mean, just so we did set a best rate for everybody that's on, you know, that's what we don't need to.
Yeah, and this would be just for the E M Ts and paramedics. This would not be for the E M Rs, just 'cause they can't take patient care. We have, our roster is, like, we have a decent roster. We just have a lot of E M Rs or people who cannot take full patient care.
Is there, uh, subject, other subjecting to evolve with E M Rs? Is there, is there more E M T training going on when you're serving, getting these out with E M Rs?
We do have the ability to get them certification for their E M T. But again, E M T course takes about 120 hours of schooling.
It's not gonna help you right now.
Yeah, well, and it's just more of, you know, I mean, everybody has full-time jobs, you know, there's, you know, people need babysitters, this kind of stuff, you know. Our nearest college that we could send them to is in Evolith or in Ely, so that's drive time and stuff like that. So it's hard to, for people to chisel out that time with some busy schedules. But we do offer it if they do want to get their certification.
All right. Did you have anything else or is that it?
No.
So then we need a motion.
I'll make a motion when we adopt the 120 dollars for each 36 hours volunteers to do on call on the schedule.
Motion by White. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Fitzpatrick. Any discussion?
Joe, you can't make the motion. You're an E M T on the service.
I'll make the.
I'll second it.
Um, any discussion? Roll call please.
Lassie.
Yes.
White.
Upstate.
Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Lassie.
Yes.
DePontic.
Yes, motion carries. Jim, you're in vacancy. Um, planning is over.
Oh, I, I would just request that the staff would have a paper requesting any volunteers to serve on the planning commission. Unfortunately, one of our members recently passed away, creating a vacancy.
How long has he?
Bull Johnson, our chairman, Bull's been on for 10, 15 years of designing and really nice designing, did a lot of good work for us.
Okay, um, do you have a motion for that?
No, just now the council group will put a notice in the paper.
Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion quick.
Motion by White. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lassie. Any discussion? I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Campground committee. The rules and guidelines.
We have a couple of things to talk about. Jim, you wanna cover?
Joe, I have a lot of talking tonight.
That's why we have an operative to keep something. So the campground host key to us, there's a individual that has a seasonal lot for one that would like to, I'm guessing, get out of it. So Kirsten pointed out a couple of things in reference to that. Where we would, forgot what we said, Kirsten.
Um, so there is a seasonal, okay, wait, pause. I think we're on.
Are we on the soap one or?
Yeah, the, the soap one first.
Okay, I can do that. The soap one, they, the, they had a request that they would sell soap, homemade soap from the local area at the, at the shop of the campground. The campground committee thought that was kind of a cool idea, let some of the local people bring some stuff and sell there. Obviously wanna control that a little bit and wanna make sure the council approve it. Their, their deal would be, they wanna sell the soap for $4 a bar. And they would give a dollar of a rebate back to the campground for proceeds of it.
They're essentially selling it to the city at cost, letting the city market up a dollar a bar and keep the profit for the campground.
Are we buying the inventory or are they putting it basically in there in consignment and then we'll get the block?
They're just.
At the end of the year.
They're just bringing the inventory and leaving it in the store at the campground.
Yeah, at the end of the year, they'll take back whatever's left.
Do you need a motion for that?
I didn't know. I just thought we should bring it to the council because what if we get flooded with all kinds of people that wanna sell stuff there and thought we should have some sort of.
I think we should do it by motion and do anything that comes up like this case by case basis. I, we're not talking millions of dollars here.
No.
We'll make a motion, we allow them to sell the soap at $4 a bar and put $1 at the campground.
Motion by Lassie. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by White. Any discussion? I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seasonal fourth picture, pages 47 through 50.
Yes, so there is a current seasonal camper who is interested, well, not interested, they recently bought a home and will not be using their seasonal site at the campground. It's already paid. We have a no cancellation and a no sublet policy. However, the campground committee explored whether or not we'd like to let them out since it's earlier in the season. I drafted a very rough draft of some sort of agreement and thought maybe it would be beneficial to the city if we, if that is a route that you wanna go. And we do have people on a waitlist. If we contact the waitlist people, if anyone's interested in taking it over, if they can take it over at a prorated basis, and the current one, who we would then be letting out of their agreement, would get 20% back of that cost. So the city isn't losing that money and we're actually making a little bit more on top of it. Or if you just wanna stick with the non-cancellation, non-sublet.
I'm okay with it. I mean, why not bring someone else in, especially if there's a waiting list?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I just wanna point out, just remember this, we couldn't set precedence now because we've been getting a lot of calls about, how is the smoke up there? Is everybody gonna wanna leave at work if they're saying you get a refund?
Well, they're not getting a refund. Or well, they're.
Well, they're, they're.
If.
The campground committee wanted them to get a full refund. But I'm not sure that a committee can make financial decisions on behalf of the city. Can they? So they would have to bring it to council. But, so Kirsten just kinda came up with this on her own, saying that we would give them 20% of a refund. But our cancellation policies, we have a no refund policy and they do have the option to buy the travel insurance, which would then give them their refund. Yeah, recover that. So just be mindful of that and what doors it's potentially open and we're living and required for leaving the site. Because maybe the marks are bad this year, maybe the smoke is bad this year, maybe the fish are.
Very true.
It's almost like if we have a policy, we have a policy. I mean.
Very true.
It'd be nice to help everybody else that's in some sort of a situation before you start, before you start.
Then we can do this. You know, our, our budget is fairly tight. And sometimes this is the difference between making money and losing money. And we have a, we have a policy that there are no refunds. I think, I think we should stick with that policy. It's unfortunate, but we didn't cause fires in Saskatchewan and Manitoba.
Can I? Okay, go ahead. So, so as far as the refund, but let's just say, 'cause we had this come up recently too, someone was staying for eight days, they left early and, and for their whole eight days, but just like when you leave a hotel early, why can't we open that, open that site back up to re-rank it? So would you be open to the cancellation if they're leaving anyways? Why would we wanna, and we have a wait, like, waitlist, why would we wanna see some sites stay home big for the rest of the summer if these people signed a cancellation of their lease for the summer with the understanding that they get no refund?
Right.
Yeah, something.
I, I think it's pre-rented out. And in the hotel industry, if someone does leave early, they are charged for the entire time and then they, that room is re-rented. So the, a camp, a camp night, a hotel night, whatever, only had a shelf for 24 hours and you can't resell the next sector to quite as much. So if you're able to recoup any of that, those funds, then you need to be a little in that, to at least open the site up so we don't have a waitlist and then open the site.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, open, yeah, open the site up.
If, and this might be a question for Joel. If the seasonal campers have their essentially lease agreement, can we reopen it if they leave and check out?
Uh, so. This was a addition to the agenda, and I have not reviewed this. I would request time from the council to review how the city should handle the forfeiture given the signed agreement that they have. I, I'm not in a position to provide advice on that at this time. I wouldn't be reviewing. You're looking at me like I'm having not reviewed this legally, that I'm not prepared to provide advice on that.
I'm just looking at you, you're just so dumb. And I wondered why, why that also, why can't you?
Because they gave it for the whole season.
Right, but if they.
And, and you're not refunding them the money. And inside an agreement with the city, you can't then lease it to someone else.
Correct.
Is my, would be my initial response.
However.
But I don't think that's what you want to hear, so I'm hoping to review that, to provide additional advice.
However, if they left and agreed to sign a cancellation of their lease, that would cancel the, the original agreement.
They could, yes, they could, if they cancel that and write.
And write.
Saying that they are forfeiting any right to that, then potentially that would.
Give us the right to re-rund it.
Correct.
We have a form like that, we can make money, just make this one, so we can definitely make a cancellation for, with the understanding that there's no refunds.
And they could add that into their next, into next year's agreement, in the event that you forfeit or cancel.
I just don't know what the incentive would be, but if they're willing to sign it.
When are they leaving?
They close on their home July fifteenth, but are not currently at the campground right now. Their camper is there, they're looking to sell it, um, so they want to keep it there until they close on their home and can move it out of there and have somewhere to put the campground, however, if they sell it, they're willing to get it out of there right now and be done, over with it.
They have, so they have, so what, July fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay, so there is some.
If not sooner. They're willing to take it out and be done.
Alright, so then we'll table this then, so for next, next meeting, huh? Alright, campground, new business, recreation of high, department to hire Simon Bartnik as summer laborer. Okay, you recommend it?
Yep.
You pull her?
Yep.
Okay.
We have a motion to hire Simon Bartnik for summer labor.
Motion by Fitzpatrick, do we have a second? Second by Lawson, any discussion? Did you want to say something?
Yeah, would you mind if I leave now? You want me to stay for the whole meeting? Do you have something else?
I don't have anything else, I'm gonna give it to them.
I don't care.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Um, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I think we need a roll call because that's higher labor.
Great, um, yeah.
Roll call please. Lawson? White?
Yes.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Lassie?
Yes.
DePontis?
Yes, motion carries. Resolution number twenty-two, twenty-five, action of authorizing city management allocation to and effect funds from the visitor mentioned and voted off to the purpose of revitalization of city serves and amenities.
A motion to accept everything.
Motion by White, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Fitzpatrick, any discussion? Roll call please. Lawson? White?
Yes.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Lassie?
Yes.
DePontis? Yes, motion carries. Clear for applicants and interviews. So we went through and we looked through the applications this afternoon at the study session, and we have chosen ten applicants out of the twenty? Twenty-five, twenty-four. Twenty-four, um, applicants, and so the interview process, um, interview day will be determined when we can, in the next week or two, so.
Right, yes.
You should just make a motion to interview whoever you sel- whichever numbers you selected, just because you can't formally make that decision, have the study session.
So do I have a motion from? Motion by Lawson, second by Lassie. To an interview with ten applicants that were chosen, um, this are twenty-four. Do you want the, do you want to read the numbers?
Sure. Numbers, applicant number two, three, four, eleven, thirteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-two.
No one knows the number. Right, any discussion, further discussion? Roll call please. Lawson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Lassie?
Yes.
DePontis?
Yes, motion carries.
Fifty clerk treacherous follow permission to attend, that it's no available ATB club audit meeting on June fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Just make a motion, I'll let, uh, clerk treacherous follow.
Motion by White, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Lassie, any discussion?
Where, where is it?
So, uh, we found all the funds for the ATB zoning club, and they're getting audited this year, so they need representation from the city. So I did power, um, at ten AM, I'll just write the price, come straight back for it.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Roll call please. Lawson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Lassie?
Yes.
DePontis?
Yes, motion carries.
E, Rich Adams said zoning easement behind Elm over pages fifty-four to fifty-five. Rich, do I have a moment?
Hello, everybody. Um, I have another topic I'd like to discuss, um, when I asked the city to give me an easement, uh, for the vacant, counting a little bit that most of the city property, parcel number five, zero zero eight zero, zero zero four zero. And if you use my property, um, is the only access in my property, they purchase and try to, you know, track that. And then I was told when I went to Ziploc realty, they showed it wouldn't be legal access to my property. Um, I haven't seen anywhere on any of my easements that says that. Some paperwork is up there, I haven't seen that, but I just want to make sure that it isn't, this is a cultural thing or a zoning measure.
Yeah, so the, you have a map in your packet there?
Yes, we do.
Um, this portion that's in red. Is, yeah, the red portion, we're asking for the easement, right? So that was the old highway that was vacated by the county?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think it was Highway two twelve, I don't know if that.
Yeah. And so now it's just kind of there, and no one has really done anything with it. And I don't think the title company held any.
No.
No, nothing on it at all, so.
No, there, there is some easements that say that there are four of this land, but they're actually four when the new highway was put in. Not, uh, not that area.
Right, so Rich is asking that the council grant, grant an easement on those, in those locations?
Don't worry if they.
And are you asking for zoning?
They've got some title, like I said, my title company does check, can you do a title insurance? But I'm just checking to see if, if there, if there is a, that, that easement, that road does run through city property.
And Rich, that road, it definitely has been verified as being abandoned, so.
It is vacated.
Vacated, yes.
It's not abandoned, it's vacated.
No, okay, gotcha.
Which, the difference of, I'm not sure. Um, that's what the county had told me. Um, they said another round, one or two, other than that, down the, of the maintaining easement, I'm, I'd like to make an offer to purchase the whole section and/or just the portion that have marked in red. Um, and they said if they could do that, offer a tax value of it, twenty-five hundred, I think, or. Um, it's like they don't have any interest in the whole thing, only interest I have is the road easement. Um, which is headline number two here. Um, since they said they could bring in that ATB trail and, uh, bike and hike. Number three, instead of be looking into rezoning all of my property, the twenty-six point six five acres, um, as residential, it's a conservancy, a conservancy district, they, uh, and I would like to build a home on there, and then other people that are interested buying sections of, from ATB to build on to, I have five, six other people interested. That would be, want to build. Um, instead of, another option I would have is to ask the city to explore, um, installing, uh, water sewer infrastructure, um, developing one acre lots back there, um, have a very, instead of PUC I've talked to, they've said that it's achievable to get water sewer back there. I talked to them, we went through them, absolutely, they're all, said this is all, just a start up here, let's get some talk going and see what can be done. Um, just that if there's no water sewer, if the city would allow, well, except, which, this is on city property. That's, and then that would have, it would have to be, probably, whatever county recommends for lots. He just said, um, on the backside of Elm, I want to offer the property owners that have, um, that bought my property, the opportunity to purchase a small portion, um, that they have been using for years. Some people have had grudges and chats back there that are leaving on my property. And I'm gonna offer them the chance to purchase that land, um, a small portion, whatever it is. Like I said, the size is going to be determined on when surveying is done, so it doesn't affect any other future development of that land, if, if it's, can be done, or, just any exception, okay, is it? Um, so there's a, a lot of things going, this is just something, uh, so brand new, right now, brand new to me too, and, um, I just hope to work with the city, I'm hoping they're doing this, and, um, I don't want to do this as in a competition, I know we've got the rest of the home to go in, but I'd hope to work with the city and, you know, help grow and develop the stone, I mean, the, the, I have a range of these, that we need more lots, we need more housing, and I have contractors out there that are going to stay, want to build now, and, uh, that's.
So Rich, I just want to clarify, do you want, like, a combination, or one or a couple things? So you want to either buy the entire parcel?
Yes.
That's in blue and red?
Yes.
Or you want to buy the road that's in red?
Yeah, just the red section, yes.
Or you want the city to give you an easement for that road?
Yes.
Okay, so one of those.
And I would prefer just easement, I really don't, wouldn't like to buy, but if, if that's the case, yes, then I would.
So what?
Tax value for that property, and like I said, I really, I would probably just offer back for sale anyway, just so I can legally have the road access.
So that's, that's the first thing, is, is the road. Then the other issue is, or, which is, um, the residential portion in, in, uh, yellow or orange, you want that zone residential?
Yes, zone conservancy. Zone conservancy, yeah.
Yep, and then you would either like to have smaller lots with infrastructure?
Yes.
Or you want to do larger acreage?
With a lot of.
Than a lot of. Than a lot of.
As many, as many part pieces as you can, I mean, obviously if there's city water sewer, the more of the better, just for your tax value and everything else. Um, but I, I feel, um, one acre lots are very desirable sized lots to be able to put a house, easy sized garage and everything.
How many lots do you propose you can build?
Um, you could probably get, I'm thinking about seventeen to go back there.
And you already have people that are willing to?
I have people on, uh, I have six people listed that they would buy, there's city water sewer, probably more.
Good, Rich, just a few comments here. The, the city water sewer, I believe we have from Vault to PUC on that, that's the, uh, as far as the rezoning, um, have you contacted Friskley, the state office?
Yes, yes, I talked to him.
Has he given you any other advice?
Yeah, he said, uh, you have to come to all your meetings.
Let me give you some advice. Uh, and you are right, it's a conservancy district, and the way, uh, reason it's conservancy is that it's put in reserve because the city had no use for it at that time, that we took the rezoning yet. So conservancy districts are fairly easy to rezon. However, you're looking at either a planned unit of development or subdivisions, and we do have regulations in the zoning margins that, uh, apply here. And as far as I know, the subdivision regulations are about, almost as old as I am, and, uh, they were developed, I believe, in the nineteen seventies. And I'm probably the only one who's got a copy of it, so, but I would be willing to work with you on that, and along with the planning commission, because we do have things that have to, they're not impossible.
Yes.
But we have to follow, you know, what the prescribed procedures are.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking more of a, of subdivision regulations, which, you know, that's going to require more than just, you know, dividing a lot and so on and so forth.
Yeah, I realize this, you know, this is not going to be small, I'm taking, it's, it's a, it's a big project, but, but, uh, people are willing to work, I've, I have talked to grounds of anger, Minnesota Power, Project Communications, PUC, um, law firm, law bot, already, and, um, I'm just trying to get the ball rolling, and get, have a bit of, to see how this can, how this can work to help the city that, um.
One thing, the first thing you should do is to apply for a rezoning. And, uh, that would be your first step towards, uh, any movements towards getting the subdivisions or dividing lots and whatever. Once you've got a rezon, you can work on new lot divisions, uh, perhaps looking at streets or access or water sewer. That's the first thing you should do.
And, and the easement to make sure that they have legal access to get them.
The first thing you should do is make sure you have legal easement to get them.
Yeah, that would be.
That would be number one.
Yeah, that would be his job. What is, what's the access to the south?
Um, it's that, it's the old, from under two twelve.
Is that, is that the lawful access you have now?
Yes.
Okay, so you do have lawful access. You just want more.
I'm assuming I do.
Yeah.
No, there's no easement.
We can't find a, anywhere in the area where there's an easement.
Yeah, there's a road, everyone runs down it.
Okay, so, I mean, I can see the road come there, that's not a, you don't have, your, your parcel is not, uh, in possession of the law.
Um, on the paperwork that I have, it's, it's, it's a difference. That, everything that I have from the title company does not say anything about that road. So, singles coming that out, this might be able to help you. Now, there's.
No, it's, it's, it's your, it's essentially as the landowner, it's a, it's a simple issue, access for yourself. If you don't have it, there are avenues available to petition for a court winning or do, and it sounds like you've already talked with people about this.
Yes.
Not telling them anything to do. But yeah, it's certainly something that in working.
Yeah, green up out of the blue.
Rich, uh, will the, you know, this, man behind everybody's houses there and stuff?
Yeah.
It's always been an excess, but, like, ATB's homes to give it out of town, is that going to go away, or do you think that would be?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to work with that too, and I've also talked to the attorney about that too, what my liabilities are, it's a personal maximum because it's not my property, um, force company that opened before, they, they care, or, you know, they think a lot of, right, but I didn't put no trespass inside, which is, that helps cover my liability, sir, it says you can't be on there, but they still are, um, I'm glad it happened, I don't know if I should, I've, I've got cameras out to see who's been going back and forth, but, yeah. But, when, I'm hoping when this all gets surveyed on, I can leave a buffer zone of trees between Elm and what's happening back there, so it's, so it could possibly be a contingency.
I know that's a big question that everybody's thinking.
Yeah, oh, exactly, I know, I've used it, you know, I've used it.
Used to be a highway.
Yeah, 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 and, you know, the second thing on that is, you know, it's also, you know, things change, you know, um, if things don't change, city doesn't grow, it doesn't grow anymore. It's kind of, you know, I feel it's, if you have less development going on, I'm gonna do a, the east development and offer two, two separate deals. This would be one of the oversized lots.
I hope yours goes faster than ours did.
I'm hoping too. I'm not getting any younger, so.
Alright, so, um, what's the best course of action, that's obviously planning and zoning for the residential portion of that, of the mass, but in regards to the easement?
Easements are more of a legal matter, I don't know, you know, what we can do, Joel, but you have any thoughts on that?
The pleasure of the council, um, if you want to look into granting an easement, I'm happy to begin, um, uh, preparing something like that. It may involve, um, uh, serving costs, and the question would be, uh, for the city, who's going to bear the cost of that? Be responsible for, for that. Uh, but as far as the, the drafting of the easement, negotiating back and forth with you and your attorney, uh, for, for making, we have, I'm happy to work on that. I, I do apologize, I need to head to my next meeting here, so, uh, but I am available to help with any, any issues or questions that come up.
Thank you, Joel. So which do you prefer, do you prefer to purchase that road, do you prefer easement, or do you prefer to purchase the chunk? Because we have another offer for the chunk.
Yeah, um, myself, just the easement to make sure that that, that current road, like, is.
That's your first plan?
I, I.
Yeah, and.
That's, that's.
Yeah, that, yes.
And I, and I, I was hoping you'd say that, because then that still opens up to all the people that are still.
Yes.
And access to their backyards on.
Well, well, I would not change that, I, I wouldn't, but, but if it stays an easement, then it will always be there.
Well, the easement is for him.
Huh?
Easement for him, not the public. Either for him or the public.
They're already using it.
Yeah, I would, I would. I think either way, everybody that comes back to charity that uses that, that's it's it's that road's got to be there for everybody. That has property along there. It can't, it can't close off for anybody right now.
And they would have to use that road if anybody bought property back there.
Yes, yeah, that would have to be the, we roll back and I actually have another map I'm going to get on that I have.
Yeah, that would be the easement.
And I have drawn a joke today, I have drawn her kind of proposed road with the conversation. So that's, like I said, that the road would not, it would continue to be a steady road, but it would continue all the way back to the backside of L. So that would be just a continuation of that road.
So it wouldn't be a, wouldn't be a private road?
No.
Then how would the city take it over?
Well, it's already on your property.
Yeah. So what do you think about that?
So you know, like I said, this is, this is all, when I experienced this, I'm thinking, Matt, where does this go? Because it's already on your property. It runs through mine, but who owns it? It used to be county, they said they vacated it, now it's on city property, then it goes to my property. Where does everybody's grant sand at this road?
That's a good point.
Are we responsible?
That's what you, no, I'm happy to look into it or whatever you need, but yeah, sorry, sorry.
So would the city be responsible for maintaining the road?
I I don't know. Well, if if the new development goes back, it would be renamed as a new city, new street, going all the way to.
So so that would be optional, right? So um like in the case of Stan's place, that's technically his road. It was never turned over to the city, which is why it's still gravel. So it could operate in that capacity or the city could assume ownership from the developer of the street, right? That was something that we talked about with the West Babbitt stuff and having a developer come in and all that.
Put in the infrastructure and then.
Right, so um there's a couple of different ways that can go. That's that's quite a ways down the road here, I think, to try and iron those things out.
Yes.
I I think correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the city has an interest in making this a public easement is what it is. So I don't know if we have to designate that as a thing, as a public easement.
Well, there's no easement on there at all. And it depends on who, who. So it'd be like, it would be on the street, like the road.
Because all the ATVs and snowmobiles use it right now too, so. So yeah, it would be like a road, but
Right.
We don't want ownership of it right now, because.
Right. So all the ATVs and everyone's going through private property. So they were using.
City property, yeah.
Nope, on the backside of it.
Oh, well, yeah, I'm not talking about that though. I'm talking about this section that goes from South Drive to where the trail turns north toward the lake. That sees a lot of ATV and snowmobile traffic and so I would like to see that remain public as of right now. Right, and that's something that Curtis was talking about too, his offer. Same same thing, everybody's on the on the same goal here, I don't know how to to write that legally.
Right, but who would be maintaining it? Because right now it's pretty rough, right?
Well and like I said, the the maintenance part, right now, like I said, that's still down the road too, just need to find out that, you know, if this property is settled, that I'm going to have a legal access to my property.
Yeah, because if that chunk is sold, that you would have to get an easement through the owner.
Yeah, or right now you have easement from the owner, which is a secret that.
Right. Yeah, easement for life.
Period through the owner. Or the city government sell it without maintenance, keeping the cartway.
You don't, you don't want a cartway because you can't move a cartway.
But access, yeah. The portion that highlighted red key that is the city, so that is your property and you can sell it off the Marley.
I guess that was going to be my question. Can it be written as access will be provided through parcels such and such by the city of Babbitt?
I think for an easement, you need to have a legal description with all the degrees and everything out of, otherwise it would be going really early through there. Where, when you talk to PUC, did they mention how the utilities would come through?
Oh, yeah, they said that the they obviously prefer to go into a manhole three or four of them along that that
Oh, okay.
That street that we talked about, right, through. It would have to go through probably somebody's property that would have to pay also permission to that to go through. And and you have family that has property right there.
You have, you know, she got a guy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, and you know, like I said, this is all all just starting and we had talked to them for a while, but it made most of that, it's feasible, it's now a super long run and you probably have to be a left station because Alan was on the high end of town.
Right.
But it says just getting it all here to get started and um Thursday morning, nine o'clock.
Come in and chat, we have a public hearing that we go through and then we'll put you on the agenda.
Yeah, maybe you can maybe talk with Fred, we said this is just to get things going and see what we can do.
Yeah, we got to start somewhere, because you know, my favorite expression is we're moving at the speed of government.
Exactly. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, on to renew golf course league agreement. Keep talking, yes.
Oh, great. Uh this is just mostly for information. I'll tell you what's happening out there. We had, you know, last year, we had flooding with the at the pump wells and our drains and so on and so forth. So escaped some damage. So we applied to FEMA and FEMA denied our claim because their claim is that the golf the golf course owns nothing out there. The golf association and because we leased the land from the city, the city owns everything there. A similar thing happened this this break where we could use some full tab money to make improvements to the course. Now, these blessed bureaucrats who have their head stuck somewhere else said, no, you, we can't let you use that money anymore because basically you own nothing. It belongs to the city. And I think they have us confused with municipal golf courses because our golf association owns every single thing out there from from a tee to a ball to all of our equipment. We own the clubhouse, we pay taxes and insurance on it. Uh we own the maintenance shack and everything in it, we pay taxes and insurance on it. We own the pump house, the wells, everything. But it doesn't specify that that in the lease. So what I talked to Joel about this before getting started and we are going to see if we can write it in the lease so that even the toughest bureaucrat can understand that the city does not own things out there. Golf association does. So this is what we're doing. This thing that we here is from the sign in two thousand twelve, twenty years lease, so it goes to twenty thirty-two. So we've got seven years left on, but that doesn't help us now. We need proof to the idiots that it's our equipment.
Can you amend the lease any time if it's being released on?
This is, I think it says in here that we can amend it even though it's good for twenty years. We can amend it from time to time or even in addition to it stating that the golf association, which is a duly intercharted corporation, owns all this stuff. The city does not. And I don't know if the city would have a problem with that. But it would sure as hell help us out.
Those are all going to work on it.
Joel, I'm going to talk to my ass tomorrow, I hope, and pick his brains and stupidly come up with it. So I just thought I'd give you a heads up on that. And I don't know how much time Kirsten spent looking for for our leases.
We had two folders.
Yeah, the first folder was what, nineteen ninety-five, it was about thirteen, fourteen pages of lease. That was written in lawyer language, that not even a lawyer could understand anymore. So then I told her that I'm sure we have another one, which I had signed. So anyhow, that's uh that's what we are.
All right, thank you for that. G, street department authorization to attend the fall expo, October first through second, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to authorize street person to go.
Please, motion by Wade. Second by Lassie, any discussion? Call please. Lassie? White?
Yes.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Lassie?
Yep.
Suppricet? Yes, motion carries. H, Kathy Littler, leave of absence from the ambulance department. And we can just put Michael Rouse with the two, right? We don't, we have to do separate.
Are the requests in the same time or court or what?
Um just leave of absence.
Before we get to all that, we have the the safety committee met today and I'm normally a big supporter of past practice, but it's been established uh not that long ago where we terminated two employees that were on department one, he was formerly director, moved away and stuff and the situation was again I keep names out of it and not make it personal, I I like both of these people on a personal level, but they have not participated in anything. Mike in over a year hasn't shown up to anything. He's an EMR, we generally don't do that to EMRs. And Kathy Littler has, I was talking to Mike, it's a one-year commitment when we paid for the new school, which we did. She she made her one-year commitment, but she hasn't been involved in over eight months of anything, no work, no communication, no anything. And when they received the letter that they have ninety days to start participating, they'll be terminated today. I want to bring the safety committee, and again, this is our recommendation of the council, we voted in the mask vote that we go ahead and de- deny their request for absence and that they fulfill what's in the letter that was sent out for them, ninety days to start showing up and participate in the training, or else they can choose to resign. So that was the recommendation. Emily wants to, if you want her to add anything, you can. Otherwise that's all we have.
Yeah, there's not really much to add. After, I did go back and take a look at, because we have to name reports, we have to keep files of everything that we do, training, truck checks, all that stuff. It has been quite a while since we've seen um either of these folks. And I've tried reaching out, trying to get ahold of them and not to mention, they have pagers and radios and now we have four or five new people who are trying to get trained in and we have no equipment for them. And there are people who are wanting to be active. And I want to invest the equipment and time and energy to those and I know that I I'm not a heart surgeon, but I think insurance wise or whatever, we have a cap on how many we can have a roster spot for. And I don't want us to sit with a capped roster with how many people who aren't active when you know, right now we have very few people, as I said earlier. I want to try to get more spots for active people.
So you want to deny their request for the leave of absence?
I'd like to see them get pushed to be active if they would like to be active. We haven't seen one of them for a year, we haven't seen one of them for seven, eight months. And one of them being an EMT, which would be very helpful this summer, taking some of the load off on.
But what if if they haven't come already? You know.
So they can't terminate and write that recommendation because they've already received the letter saying they have until November to start compliance, so.
Was that the last meeting that the council approved the letters being sent out? These two individuals were part of that group until they were sent a letter to be in compliance with their training and stuff recently and then the leave of absence request came after the letter was sent, so I think what they're saying
It was in response to.
If they would like to see them respond to the letters that were sent out within the provisions that were put out in the letters rather than granting them the leave of absence where they won't hold on to pagers and radios? Oh, that's what it is, okay.
Yeah.
I was trying to figure out like what the.
The leave of absence was in response to the letters of non-compliance.
And how many is not that one?
But you would prefer a resignation versus a leave of absence?
I think she would prefer me.
Well, you'd prefer them to have staff. I mean, yes, maybe, yes, but okay, I understand.
And I believe we have, what, is it four or five right now that are on a leave of absence? I know four for, well, there's two for sure, I mean, you'd be if that would be like four or five.
Two for sure, this would bump it up to three or yeah.
All right, so you can make a motion. Um, all right, so then your your request basically is either a leave of absence?
Yeah, I'd see them either step back up or if their decision is to part ways, then amicably part ways and thank them for their service, if that is what they choose.
Okay. Thank you for that, so now let's do this individually. Do we have a motion for Kathy Littler?
I'll make that motion to deny her leave of absence.
Okay, motion by Fitzpatrick, do we have a second? Second by Lassie, any discussion?
It's interesting, both the letters are identical.
Yeah.
Except for closing.
Yes. Very fun. Um, all right, any further discussion? Call please, Lassie? White?
Upstate.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Lassie? Suppricet? Yes. Motion carries. On to Mr. Rose, leave of absence from the ambulance department. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to deny Mike Ross's leave of absence.
Motion by Fitzpatrick, do we have a second? Second by Lassie? Any discussion? Call please. Lassie? White? Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Lassie? Suppricet? Yes, motion carries. On to the street department garage.
So I finally just got this price in. I've been working on this for like two years to try and get this garage door replaced. Um the trouble is, is that it's on the old Colt storage building and it needs refrained with wood as well. Uh and then wrapped, um so it needs, like it needs a carpenter to do it, right? So I finally got a price from a person to do this. Uh it is budgeted for, it's something that we budgeted for the last two years actually, because we've been trying to get it done that long. Um and I finally received a written quote uh this morning. As I had received this price in text a month ago, but I finally got it written out for you guys, so. Um we're going to replace an old wooden rotten falling down garage door on the Colt storage building with a new commercial uninsulated door. Um and a new opener which recently burst into flames uh three, four days ago. So this this is something that I would like to see done immediately, as soon as possible.
Do they, do they have to be licensed or bonded or anything that you work for the city?
I I don't know how that all plays out. I I called three door companies and two of them didn't want to do it because of the carpentry. The other one said they were going to do it, I I I've met with him twice in the last year, so. I don't know.
Yeah, do you know if there's anything that I license or bonded or work for the city? I know we've seen it times, but also prices.
Sure, there is or not.
I would have said yes. I wish, I don't hope there's a price, a price limit, you know? It's under X and O, you don't have to be, you don't have to be.
Well, hopefully if we get them to a table and then have our staff check the table tomorrow. I think he's okay with that.
Is this quote, uh perhaps somebody that is not licensed and bonded?
Is this one from Dean and Dave?
Dean and Dave, yeah.
You know, are they licensed or bonded?
I am not sure of the entire situation there. The city did hire them to build a fish cleaning shack at the campground.
Correct.
Yeah.
They have worked for the city in the past, I don't, I don't know what the.
Were those questions asked when they?
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't think so. But it seems to me the, uh, fish cleaning shack is pretty close to this amount, isn't it? Just three quarter thousand?
Yeah, something like that.
I'll make a motion, but we hired these two to, uh, do the garage door.
Motion by Lassie, second by White?
For, for forty-seven sixty-three.
Forty, okay, for forty-seven sixty-three. Ending, is it being licensed or bonded or?
Without it, unless you guys want to check, but I, I don't know.
Well, maybe we can do whatever, if it's been done or not.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call please. Lassie?
Yeah.
White?
Yes.
Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Lassie?
Yes.
Suponcet?
Yes, motion carries. See, next council meeting will be on June seventeenth at five P S. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, second?
Yes.
Everybody, all in favor, say hi?
Hi.